Want to stand and do it? Alright. Good evening. Thank all of you for being here today. We're here for our work session today. I'm gonna go ahead and officially call this meeting to order. I'm gonna ask Commissioner Edwards if he would lead us in our invocation and our pledge. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you'd bear heads. Dear Lord, thank you for another wonderful day. We thank you for the rain. We thank you for the events that have taken place today. And we ask that you rule over us today, Lord. You ask that you guide us, give us strength and wisdom, and take us all home safely. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where we just stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thank you so much for being here today. We are here to talk about our impact fees today. A work session on our impact fees. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Harold Cooper, the county manager, at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank you for this opportunity. I want to thank the citizens as well. We are here today to discuss our impact fees as a follow-up to our last board meeting. I'm going to yield the remaining time to Ms. Shayna Applewhite, as well as our consultant, Mr. Ross, as well as Mr. Jockstetter, the county attorney, to talk specifically about the impact fee program, the methodology, and the capital improvement elements to determine where do we go in next steps moving forward. Ms. Applewhite.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. This is just our part two of the work session we started a week ago. Mr. Ross, from Ross and Associates, he kinda walked us through what, you know, what impact fees basically are, how they're calculated, and so on. And for this session, I just wanted us to dive right in to the fees that we are proposing to go with the updated ordinance. And this information was emailed over for your review, but we do have some of it here today. So I'm gonna have Mr. Ross get us started. He does have to leave a little early today due to an emergency, but he will start us off. And then I'll finish him.
Thank you, Mark. I have to leave at 6:20. From a prior engagement I can't get out of. So, the main thing is, what do you want to talk about first? We got fees. I think, uh... Had you passed this out? Okay. And... As y'all know, you had asked that we take a look at several different percentages of the maximum fees. And we had done that. You should have a handout that looks like this. The one on top is 100%. That's the maximum. Can't charge more than that, and you probably don't want to. Then we have extra, separate sheets for what you asked for, the 20%, the 40%, and the 60% reductions. And I threw in one of my own, 51.07%. That's a strange number, but what it is, is based on 1%. The impact fee would be 1% of the cost of a new house sold in this county of the past year. I'm not recommending it or proposing it, but quite often I do get asked, "Well, what if we looked at house prices and maybe charged a certain percentage of that?" Knowing that the home buyer, of course, will pay the impact fee eventually after the builder passes it on at the closing. But what can I tell you about the fees? Did you like any of the percentage suggestions that you had asked for? Or want to talk about other percentages?
So, can you... So, we know where we at now. And I think we are trying to do something different. So, can you tell us, like, the people that's in the surrounding town, the surrounding counties around us, like Rockdale, Morgan, DeKalb? And then give us a recommendation? Can you do that?
Yes, sir. The very last page on this handout, you had seen previously a form, a table, that had all these nearby cities and counties, basically folks that are in your market area, if you will, your competition area, if you will. And what I've done on this chart is take... Can you see that on your screens? Oh, okay. In that case, I don't have to point and shoot. You can see in the various columns, the Newton County, what the fee would be at 100%, the 20, the 40, the 60, and my invented 51.07, in terms of how your fees would stack up, if you will, with these other nearby cities and counties. Now, the cities and counties that have a asterisk by them, they are currently updating their impact fees right now. So, what you see is their current fee that's being charged, but those three are working on a new impact fee schedule. And most commonly, generally, you'll probably see those go up a little bit. I don't know how much yet, because we haven't gotten to that point with those communities. But I know Spalding County was talking about going up to Henry County, thinking that Henry County was their competition. I don't know if they do that or not. But that would give you some examples of how your fees at those various percentages... And you're not stuck with those percentages. Those were just the ones that kinda came up at the last meeting, so we addressed each of them. But that does give you a pretty good idea. Bear in mind also that your impact fee study covers more public facilities than just about all of those. So, if you said, you know, "Well, let's be like Henry County. Let's charge a maximum of 35, 44", yours would be spread smoother, would be spread farther amongst more categories than Henry County is charging for. You can tell, you can really get into the weeds on this whole issue about the maximum fees. But the... You don't have to set the fee until the second public hearing on the ordinance. There's no big rush on this. Your first public hearing is coming up on Wednesday? Tuesday. Your first public hearing on the ordinance will come up on Tuesday. Most commonly, we just put the maximum fee schedule in there if the community hasn't yet decided what they want. But the second public hearing, that has to be at least two weeks later, that's the one that needs to have the fee schedule in it you want to adopt. Because at that point, you will be in a position to move forward with the impact fee ordinance. Now, you actually have a two-month breathing period. There's no real rush, because you can't adopt the ordinance until that capital improvements element, the CIE, has gone off for state review, two-month process, comes back with their approval. You have to adopt that first, the CIE, before you adopt the ordinance. So, you can see that even though we're kinda rushing ahead right now, you've got about a two-month breathing space before you actually have to decide what you want to do. I'm not suggesting you wait, but that's the timeframe that you've got.
Commissioner Sanders.
I just want to make sure that I'm understanding you right. We currently are... Each developer is paying about $1,700 per home that's being built. Is that correct?
I believe so, about $1,700, yeah.
Okay, $1,762. And I heard that we were the lowest in the Atlanta metro going area. We're the lowest, correct? Okay. And I see that... How much are apartment complexes are paying? Is that... Am I saying this right? Three for 200? I'm sorry, go ahead. I'll let you explain it. So apartments are not paying any impact fees, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Oh, they are? Okay.
The only people that's not paying impact fees are commercialists.
Commercialists. And is there a reason why we stopped doing that? I'm just asking for clarity. So, we're looking to go back to adding the impact? Okay. Alright. So, 'cause I was wondering about the apartments. I want to make sure, and this is not my area, that's why I'm asking questions. So, is this a standard fee for the apartment complexes to be paying versus the other counties? 'Cause I know in my district, I think I have two that are about 600 units.
I think we need to increase all of the impact fees, in my opinion.
Yeah. 'Cause that's been an issue of a lot of the residents. They are feeling that apartments are not paying enough, and they're taking all of the cost.
I don't have the current fee we pay for apartments right now. I just have the same with family.
Okay.
But what we are proposing here would be an increase, slight increase to what we're currently charging right now.
And what percentage? Don't the percentages go to the state? Don't you have to send a certain amount to the state? Or this just goes straight to Newton County?
It goes to our impact fee projects here, all capital improvement projects.
Okay.
Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple of questions. When was the last time we've actually updated our impact fees? If at all? And then my second question is, what percentage would actually help the county with completing our current projects or areas that we currently utilize impact fees for? So, those are my two questions. When was the last update, if at all? And looking at these percentages, though, 100%, 20%, 40%, 60%, 51.07, which one of these percentages would help the county the most when it comes to maximizing how we are able to address the current areas that we utilize impact fees for? Does that make sense?
The ordinance, it was last amended in 2018. And that was just to remove the commercial component. But before then, we haven't really touched it, since it was initially put in place in the early 2000s. What we are currently doing, this go-around, is we are adding a few more departments. So, right now, we have just roads, library, and parks and rec. We are proposing to add fire services, the sheriff's office, animal services, and EMA. And for that reason, you know, I would recommend, you know, we do increase the fees. And based on comparisons from our surrounding jurisdictions, as shown in this column here, if we were to do 20% of... Currently, we'll only put us at 1746, which is less than what we're charging right now. So, I would move to the next percentage of 40%, which would be about 349320, at least for residential. Just take that 40% bracket right down, you know, through all the categories.
So, that 40%, what you're saying is, would actually help us maximize the usage of these impact fees because we're adding the additional departments? So, that 40% would generally, will definitely give us a great way to maximize these impact fees?
I think it would be a start. And then we would have room if we needed to adjust it later on.
Okay.
And Mr. Mason, to your point about how much do we need to finish our projects? In theory, under Development Impact Fee Act, you never finish. So, every time there's new construction, the idea is you need new services. So, you're kinda chasing, you know, you're chasing development, in a way. And that's why you periodically update your capital improvement element, that CIE list. And you'll notice that CIE list never dwindles. There's always... New growth always brings with it demand for more service. That's the entire nature of your impact fee. So, it sounds like we're being reactive, and in a way, you are. Although, it is a way to advance funds and projects. But it's this forever circular motion.
And you're absolutely correct. That's why I think I kinda, I realized that. So, I kinda changed my question to how do we maximize those funds versus finishing the projects? Because I realized, as I was asking the question, we won't ever finish them. But how can we get the best usage of the funds that we're generating from the impact fees to help address the areas that we currently use impact fees for?
A lot of that happens every year in your budgeting process. That's when you know, "How much are we gonna get? What are we gonna spend it on? Where does it go?"
Right.
So, that's a never-ending process, really. But every year, you'll look at that again. One thing I want to be sure everybody understands, the cost of a fire truck doesn't change. Well, I mean, it's... The cost of a fire truck is the cost of a fire truck. If it's 100% impact fee eligible, but you're only charging, let's say, 40%, you can only use 40% of the money, impact fees, to pay for that fire truck, you gotta go find the rest of the money somewhere else.
Right. Another revenue stream.
You folks see this every year in budgeting process, I think.
Thank you. That helps answer both of those questions.
Anyone else? So Shayna, Shayna, so, we're not experts on these impact fees. So, we kinda leaning to you guys for your direction. So, your recommendation is?
60%. 40%.
40%.
40%.
Yeah.
Yeah, 60% would put us at 5,200 per house. I would say 40% would be a good starting point.
And that 40% puts us in the range of the surrounding counties? Is that right?
It does. Looking at their numbers in this second column here.
And we just want to make sure the board understand. We are so far, because we haven't looked at this, we're behind a great deal in impact fees. And so, once we go up, it's pretty good, pretty sure that other counties are gonna go up as well. So, we still will be behind, but at least we making some progress. Thank Commissioner Edwards. Had a question next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So... So... We have to be cautious of new projects that we create for impact fees, because we're gonna be responsible for whatever percentage those impact fees do not cover. Is that correct, right? Is that a correct statement? So, anything short of 100% of what we're allowed to charge in terms of impact fees, a new project, say if we charge 60, we're gonna be responsible for 40 of that. And that's, I think that ties into what you were talking about in the budget. You know, being careful not to create new uses for impact fees, because there is a match of some sort, unless we go to 100% on our potential, right? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Anyone else? Commissioner Sanders?
Not even... I'm looking at Rockdale County, which population is less than Newton. And then I'm looking at Henry, whose population is way bigger than Rockdale. And I see that their impact fees are higher. Do you happen to know their reasoning? And you might not, but I'm just curious to see if you have some facts in regards to that, with the smaller county being, their impact fees being higher than the larger county?
It's strictly a matter of decision-making by the elected officials. They hear from the public, they hear from the home builders, they hear from everybody in the process of coming up with a number that they're comfortable with. All of these, except the city of Atlanta, the city of Atlanta is the only one on this list that actually charges 100%. But they're not doing half of what you're gonna be doing in terms of public facilities. All the rest on this list are charging less than they could. And it varies. I think Henry County came up to something like 30% or so of the maximum they could do. Now, you don't have to do it across the board. You could say, "Well, let's..." I'll make it complicated. You could say, "Well, let's reduce our roads by 40%. Let's reduce fire by 20%." In other words, it gets really complicated if you also want to look at it category by category, as opposed to just across the board. Across the board is generally the easiest way to look at these things.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I apologize. I have a prior engagement I can't get out of. But I'm always available, work sessions, public hearings. Of course, I'll be back next week anyway with your public hearing to send the CIE in, so we can continue this conversation as long as you care to. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So Shayna, you want to tell us about our next steps? Well, first of all, let me ask, Commissioner, y'all have any more questions? Shayna, you want to tell us about our next step?
Yes, sir. So, we have our first public hearing is going to be on the second, you know, for the CIE report and the impact fee ordinance and the fee schedule update. This is gonna be next Tuesday, which is why I wanted to bring this information to you in advance, where we will, at that time, our staff will request or asks the board for a vote to transmit everything to the DCA, so they can begin their 60-day process review. And then it'll come back for us for another hearing, once they're done. And if they've approved everything, we'll have our second public hearing where we can adopt it, as recommended by DCA. But it has to be adopted by June 30th, so that we can maintain our qualified local government status.
I want to make sure everybody's on the same page. Commissioner, y'all, I don't have any more questions, because a public hearing is for the public. Another presentation will be made, but it'll be for the public to make comments. So...
That would be the public hearing, sir. On the second.
Yeah. So, I want to make sure the commission... So, I guess we'll get a chance for the commissioners to make questions and stuff like that during the adoption period?
That might, that'd be it.
Okay. Okay. Okay, cool. We good?
I just want to briefly go over to the second part of today. So, the actual ordinance, so this fee schedule is just a part of the actual impact fee ordinance. And we are... The document I provided, the red line document, as well as the clean copy, most of the updates were just updating the language, you know, formatting. But we do have a few major updates I just want to point out to you. So, this is a new section that we added, the fee assessment and the payment. So, it addresses, this is Section 34-F, is what we have here. And these are the topics that it goes over, just the appeal process, eligibility of the file and appeal, and so on. I'm not gonna read through everything. This was included in your email, the documents I emailed over. And you will be getting hard copies of these in time for the next board meeting. This, we kind of moved this section around. It was previously 3437, now 3435, and it just deals with exemptions. So, this is not a new section. And again, requests for approval of exemptions and so on. And the other new section we added was Section 3438, which deals with refunds. And that's, you know, how we can, if we have to refund anyone with a fee. So, those are the three major changes. But everything else would be just, I guess, language updates, formatting, sections, and so on. And I think... Oh, and this one, I'm so sorry. And then periodic review and amendments. So, Section 34-4, this is also a new section. And this basically goes through our amendment process. We usually amend the CIE report every year. You know, we have the opportunity to amend our impact fees if we need be. So, this walks us through how we do that portion. And this is just a continuation, so longer section. And then we just discuss the fee schedule. So, this is what I wanted to bring before the board, and just to have, give you an opportunity to see what we're gonna be presenting when we come back for the public hearing on the second. And, yes, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, I did have one more question as we were talking about it. So, you mentioned earlier that we want to make sure that we have this fee schedule adopted by June 30th. And so, once it is adopted, when does this go into effect? Is it immediate, like July 1 of 24? Does it go into effect?
Yes, sir. I'm shaking my head, sorry.
That's okay. It's alright.
You gotta go to the state first, yeah.
Okay.
Well, you go to the state before your final adoption.
Okay.
So, when you adopt it, it will become...
So, we'll adopt it way before?
You may want to delay an effective date to give the industry some notice.
Right.
So, if somebody doesn't walk in with a check and it's not enough.
Correct.
You know, it might make sense to make it effective, go 30 days out or something, just to give the world an opportunity to adjust.
Right.
But you can make it effective the day to date. Because by that point, the DCA will have reviewed and approved, and will be prepared, ready for your adoption.
Okay.
Because you will get phone calls.
Oh, I'm certain. That's why I was asking, like, how quickly?
It's a substantial increase. I'm not saying it's not an appropriate increase.
Right.
Frankly, I think it is.
Correct.
But it is on an individual project. It's gonna be a decent addition.
Absolutely.
Because remember now, if somebody come in to do a subdivision, where they was paying...
1762.
1762.
Now, they gonna go up and be paying...
3493.
3490 something for their house. And if they doing...
That's like double.
300 houses in there, you know?
Yeah.
So, they'll be calling you.
And then, I was gonna say, I'm sorry, a quick one, last question. In addition to that, once it is actually in effect... Hold on, I just lost my question. I am getting older. I lost my question.
We'll come back to you, but it's needed. Commissioner Sanders.
No, if they've already submitted their permits, because we collect the impact fee at that time. So, yeah. So, that would already be in. So, if you apply after the period, then everything would apply to anybody who applies after, I guess, June 30th, or whenever the board... We'll, I mean, we are required to at least adopt it by June 30th. But as Mr. Jockstetter said, we, the board can determine if they want to be effective July 1st, if we want to wait a period. But whenever that period comes, yes, whoever applies at that time, it will apply to them.
But let's just, so, make sure we get clarity. But the ones that's already... Let's just say for subdivision, it's on Smith Street Road, right? And they already got a plaque for it, but they haven't started. And once we adopt the impact fees, do the new impact fees affect them? Or the old impact fees affect them?
If they're submitting their permits at that time, yes.
It's the permit, the development...
The development impact fee is payable upon application for a vertical construction building permit. So, the subdivision plat would not stop. It would be application for a building permit. That's when you evaluate it. So, if I've got a subdivision already approved for 48 houses, but I haven't pulled building permits, I'm gonna have to pay the impact fee in effect when I go pull a building permit. So, you get a number of permits in Newton County, but the permit that triggers impact fees is the construction, vertical construction building permit.
So, if they hadn't applied for that one yet, and they go to apply for it... So if they hadn't applied for that one yet, and they go to apply for it, and we've already adopted the new schedule, then they will actually be charged the new fee?
That's right.
Okay. And then my other question, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, was, so once we adopt this new schedule, will we make this an annual revisitation to kind of make sure, like, this first 12 months, hey, this worked, or this didn't work? Or, hey, we really realized that maybe that wasn't enough, and maybe we need to look at a different percentage? Will this be something that we visit on a annual basis?
It necessarily would be annual, but certainly if the board's requesting an amendment, you know, we could approach it that way, like how we updated it in 2018.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Thank you so much. I think a motion, guys, if anything else, that we adjourn. If the motion by Commissioner Elwood, second by Commissioner Mason, all in favor, stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you all.